Okay.
Says yes.
Okay. Close enough at six thirty. Let me call this meeting of the Manchester by the seat. So I force your order. Yeah.
Yeah.
Kathy.
Yeah.
And here and John.
Just here.
And Brian is not here and will not be here. The, um, the first item is public comments on non-agenda items. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items in the room? Are there any, is there anyone?
I, I would like to.
If I may. Yes.
Um, I'd like to thank Brian in absenteeism. For helping us on Saturday morning. The house on the corner of school.
Mm-hmm.
That was taking the siding that was sad down. Did not have a test report on whether it was asphalt or not. We had asked them for several times. Um, they didn't have it. We closed the project down Friday afternoon. Said you can't do it until you have the test results. And they continued to work on it Saturday and Brian saw them and convinced them that they should. Get the test report and they said, well, rather than that, we'll just assume this, this test is there and we will take the necessary precautions. So I'd like to acknowledge publicly his assistance there.
Um, that's Peter Coleruso and.
I'm sorry.
Um, we probably have, give us your address to just.
Uh, or Rockwood, I wrote.
There anyone online?
Uh, that's Amy Hens.
Okay. Um. The, I have no chairman's report. Is there anything that should be on the action items?
Nothing I can think of is, we did say after town meetings. At some point, we would be looking at the short-term rental bylaw. Um, still, I think so, six days and we kind of went back and forth and said, we can wait on that, but I just. It should be on the list, so we don't forget about it.
And, uh, there was some discussion about trimming the French tree. I don't know whether we should throw this into the trees category. That was supposed to be done sometime between, well, I guess now and next December, and I'm not sure what the time of year is, but. We should at least have a checkpoint, I think, for that, to make sure that that happens.
Right. Or perhaps we should just. Let the D P W know that it's important now and.
Okay, whatever.
We can check again and make changes.
We need a little tickler to.
Yeah.
Somehow.
Um. I'm not sure whether this poll on the select board or could be handled some other way, but. I think we need to work a little bit on flag flying protocol. The new poll isn't tall enough for a flag at half staff and for two flags at half staff. And I think, and I also like to see that there's somebody. In town who's responsible for that poll. And is actually going to do it. And I'm, I would recommend that we put town flags, we'll purview with the fire department, because they seem to be good at it.
Okay.
I. We, we should talk about that generally.
Okay.
Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is a joint meeting with Board of Health. Greg, could you? Watch that?
Uh, sure. Um, so the, um, M U that was crafted between the two bodies, um, a, a little while ago. Uh, called for regular updates and we haven't been real faithful to that, so it was time to, to do that. Um, so the two main topics tonight really are to hear an update on activities. Um, that the board is, uh, has underway. Uh, I think Wendy provided a, a memo or summary of those activities in your packet, if you can provide those for us to convene. Um, and then the main topic of tonight, there is a proposal to, um. Reestablish and expand the, uh, transfer station in Gloucester on Condon Road. On the industrial park there, um, and is, it's, uh, to accept, um, construction debris, demolition debris. And, uh, the city Board of Health is about to have a hearing started, uh, to Wednesday night, I believe it is.
Yep.
And then, uh, uh, that would be determining participants and then following, I think the following hearing. Um, so we should talk a little bit about that project and whether or not you have concerns that you would like to. brought forth to the, to the city Board of Health as part of their hearing process. So with that, I think Wendy, if you want to start.
Sure.
Reviews.
Um. It might be easier, I know, um, just to actually start with the Conlon Road. You, you gave us sort of a good summary. Um, I didn't know if anybody else got a chance to review some of the information that had been forwarded to you folks. It is a, um, a site assignment for, uh, construction and debris waste, uh, transfer facility. There is an existing facility out there that handles, uh, recyclable materials as well as. Um. They have an existing disposal business. So they are proposing to operate up to two hundred and seventy tons per day, six days a week, twelve hours a day. So that's kind of normal for, you know, a business, uh, however it is in an area that abuts. Um, our town, that's very residential or undeveloped land, so it's right up against, um.
The wetlands.
The wetlands. What I was gonna say is, um. That Magnolia Ave area. Um. Has that one.
Yeah, can I just make sure for anybody who, everybody in this room is aware of it, but maybe somebody is listening. There are two Magnolia Avs.
Oh, I apologize. I kind of didn't recognize that.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's the Magnolia Ave in Manchester, which doesn't actually connect to. Magnolia Avenue or Magnolia Avenue in Gloucester.
Right.
So we're talking now about Magnolia Ave in Gloucester, which is quite a different place.
Okay, and I was actually talking about Magnolia Ave in Manchester, goes behind Condon Road. Uh, so it's up. University, Big, uh, Big Rock.
Yeah, yeah.
Road, that area, there's, um. Conservation land there, um, a couple of resident, there's residence, residential land up there. There's no commercial land.
Right.
Um, or uses currently.
And it's not so important.
Right. This is all in Gloucester. All the activity that they're talking about is in Gloucester, but as an abutting. Um, within a half mile of the activity, um, we were notified. And. After talking and, and reviewing, uh, speaking with, uh, the Conservation Commission, uh, you know, our. Chair, um, we are petitioning to be a party. Um, at that hearing, uh, we're gonna pretty much focus on the, um. Concerns we have about Wolf Trap Brook.
Mm-hmm.
The wetlands that surround this proposed, uh, use is the, um. Is where the Wolf Trap Brook starts, collects, and it's, um, it's a straight shot less than a mile. Down to its termination in Black Beach, um, tidal flats.
Mm-hmm.
It's all down gradient, uh, you know, topographically as well as potentially, um. Uh, you know, it, underground. So we're gonna be asking about, um, groundwater testing, if they've done any, if they have any to be proposed monitoring. There are some drinking water wells in the area, um, so we have concerns about that as well as, um, the. Gathering of waste materials that could be potentially hazardous and, and how they are going to, um. Just ensure that tho- those are captured and not released into the environment. Um, as well as, you know, we didn't see any studies of, uh, air quality, um, dust, traffic, uh, control, traffic exhaust. Um, decibel levels, that kind of thing, so. Um, we are asking that they provide additional information on that, um, as well as concern about the. Uh, traffic potential, um, so we are asking, they did not provide, but we are asking for their published truck routes. Which should indicate there's no trucks through Manchester. Um, traffic route should, uh. Route them through, uh, be directed off of, uh, one twenty-eight. Uh, via the exit fifty-three in Gloucester, onto one thirty-three and then onto Condon Road, um. So there's some information missing as far as my review of the. Site assign, uh, uh, the material, the application material, um, one of the biggest concerns I have. Uh, because of that brook. Um, Wolf Trap Brook, they did not have an environmental impact report for the site. Um, they seem to have exceeded many of the thresholds to require one, so we're not really sure. What happened between, uh, the application and it getting to the Gloucester Board of Health, but, um. We are gonna ask both the Board of Health and address the letter to the, um, Secretary, um. At the state level and ask why, um, MIPA, ask why they have not. Why they did not require the environmental impact report. So that's kind of where we're at.
The, uh, EPA, this, this is an EPA issue that supersedes the state. And they require a stormwater permit. And the permit asks the applicant to, um, identify potential contaminants. And how they, um, are gonna plan to contain them.
Mm-hmm.
Particularly getting into the wetlands and to the brook.
Mm-hmm.
Um. My personal concern is not so much construction waste, because that's more or less controll- controllable. You know what's there? It's the demolition waste, which could be god knows anything. And I don't know how they're gonna be able to predict what that is. Um, so I would personally like to see them be overly conservative in their, um. Prevention of having that blow into the. Uh, wetlands, um. But I think we should. We should get, they have to get the EPA permit. And then, uh, we should push them to do it the right way, I think. You don't want to take this lightly.
Martin, Martinhan, Board of Health, in addition to what Wendy was saying, I found it peculiar that the original volume predictions were in excess of a hundred and fifty truckloads a day. And then upon, um, criticism of that was reduced to a hundred and thirty-six. Um, and I'm always suspicious of how they get to those numbers and. Who is going to control the actual volume down the road? Is it going to be a hundred and thirty-six or a hundred and fifty-six or a hundred and eighty-six? Because above their threshold of one fifty, there are many more restrictions that need to be. Met in order for this to be permitted than below a hundred and fifty and, you know.
Who counts?
Exactly, who counts?
Question I have in that regard, how many trucks are going now and where are they going?
Well, that's one of the things that is, that is under the traffic control question, um. Those counts that they provided, uh, trips per day were only for the large, um.
It's for construction disposal, but right now it's residential.
Right.
Stuff and I don't, is that like five trucks or two trucks? I just don't know, one, one thirty-six is a big number. But I don't know in the whole scheme of things whether they're, they've, they've got a hundred and thirty-six going now.
Right, a one thirty-six was container trips, really. They did not count the smaller, but. It did not look like in the paperwork they provided that they counted the smaller trucks, the dump trucks, the, you know, um, flat, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
So I don't, they didn't give that number? They didn't give that information?
I'd be interested in that and to know whether those trucks were coming through Manchester or everything's going through Gloucester.
Is, is the site currently active?
The, there is currently is a business there, yes. Um, I think that they might have.
Phil's disposal.
Phil's disposal.
Phil's disposal.
Recycling portion may have been closed for the winter or something, or somebody.
I wonder if they had a, a permit violation.
Yes.
They didn't close them down?
They may have closed down. At one point, they were actually purchased by an out-of-state company. Um, Phil's disposal didn't stop. It was no recycling center that was collecting. Um, construction and demolition debris, um. So they, they are currently active. I don't know what happened with the permit. They, they did have, um. It's not a site assignment. It was a, it was a file number permit, I believe, in response to that, um. So there, there is history there.
Is the Gloucester Conservation Commission now active with all of this?
Yes, they are, they have sent a letter. I talked to the, um, Board of Health Director in Gloucester this afternoon. And she said, yes, we've received a letter from the Gloucester Conservation Commission, um. Reminding the permitting, uh, the permitting that they have jurisdiction and will be requiring a notice of intent. There are several more steps after this hearing. It will, um, depending on what the. What the results of the hearing are in the Gloucester Board of Health's decision. It will then go back to the state for, um, operational permitting, so there's a lot of operational information that's not provided. Um. And then it will go back through, um, Gloucester, um, permitting process for, for the actual site work.
Well, I know our Conservation Commission is aware.
Yes, I do speak.
I don't know if they're actively part of the communications activities here, but we should be.
Given us advice.
Upfront.
Yeah.
Whenever something happens, they automatically are going to tell us.
Right.
Stories.
Right, and, and, and I have spoken with, um, the chairperson, uh, he did ask. Their administrator to go and find some information, which they did, so they talked to the Gloucester Conservation Commission Administrator. Um, trying to think, he said he was, he had a conflict for tonight, so couldn't come, but, uh. I did recommend that they address an individual letter to the Board of Health, but I also, um, took notes on our conversation. Um, he had some of similar concerns as I did, particularly around Wolf Trap.
They're plugged in.
Yes, they are.
They'll respond appropriately.
Yes, the, the timeframe is really tight, unfortunately. Um, we have known about this for a while, uh. Nobody really picked up on it, uh, two years ago when it first came through. There's been several revisions that were received in Gloucester. Um, but we didn't really pick it up until we were notified about the hearing two weeks ago. So a lot of activity in the last two weeks, just to catch up and understand, uh, where we are, so. Um, we need to notify, uh, the hearing officer by tomorrow afternoon. Um, of our intent and provides, uh, whatever documentation we intend to submit as evidence.
And by applying, we will have more influence. Um. You know, I, I don't know what their position is, whether they would like to see it go ahead or not, independent of our opinion. But, uh, once we're registered, they have to at least take it into consideration.
Yep.
So I see, um, probably your biggest line of defense here is the stormwater, the catch basins with the oil stuff. Whose job is it gonna be to inspect those on a regular basis? Because. I have a little bit of experience here. These things get installed and then they get forgotten about until there's a problem.
Right.
So who's, is that gonna be Gloucester's job or?
So it, it is within Gloucester's purview to ensure that it gets done, um, the oversight of the monitoring. Um, ultimately falls both with the local Board of Health and with the state D E P. Of course, there is that E, um, EPA portion of it, but they generally don't send anybody out. The. This is one of the questions. When I spoke to, uh, the director this afternoon, um, you know, the, the question of how is. How are they going to ensure long-term compliance, uh, and monitoring? Is, is going to be part of their decision-making? So, I, and we're, I definitely want to see. Monitoring, uh, long-term, so and, and get copies of that for us, particularly because of our drinking water wells out there. There's at least six, maybe seven or eight out there, um, that we know about.
Right, I mean.
I think that gives us some leverage to push the issue with Gloucester. I mean, we can't go to Gloucester and say, hey, you know.
Right.
We're trespassing.
But it would be nice to have some kind of update down the road as to.
Yes, and that, that's what my, my, one of my requests will be, is that they provide monitoring, which did not see in the application itself. And with that, it would be a public record, therefore we could ask for those records.
Yeah, that would. That would be good.
It would be nice to have us be an automatic, um, you know, like a C C line on some of their reporting would be great, but. We'll see how.
See how they.
Willing they are to do that.
Okay, great.
Um. I guess my, my only question is, is there anything specific that you need from us? It seems like you're, you know, talking with all the right committees and, um, I appreciate the awareness and the details and anything specifically that we can help with.
I, uh, at this point, no, um. Glad that we were able to pull ourselves together and, and get, um, comments to them. That's, that's what I'm in the process of doing, so. Hopefully, you know, the next time I talk to you about it, we will have more information, uh, you know, about what they're gonna do.
Hopefully, be good information.
Yes.
I'll answer the question, please. Okay, um, now could we go back to the first topic?
Sure.
Which, which is what, what are you doing? What should we know about? Um, it's doing so many things.
Can I have a part of your thought on that?
Um, yes.
For us to predict the next three months, it's gonna happen next quarter. Is very difficult. We are bound by law to respond to Title V request within forty-five days. We don't know when they're coming. They come in waves and we've had a lot of housing complaints this year. Four, Wendy, five, five housing complaints in three months, which take an uncountable amount of time and been unpredictable.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the, why do you take so much time is. There's two types of complaints. The people that don't feel they need to comply and the people that have no idea that they're not complying. Um, both take a lot of education. Uh, unfortunately, we had to take one case to court, uh, because they refused to comply. Um, so be able to predict all that, uh, is, is.
I just wondered if you had any initiatives that you were working.
We've been working on bringing Title V up to date for over a year and it keeps getting bumped down the road because something else comes up. Um, so.
When you say bring Title V up to date, what?
There are amendments that the state is requiring, um, and we're going through those in like working groups outside of our regular meetings right now. And creating framework for the. Update of the Title V regulations.
Of, um, the addenda. Um, so actually, uh, as far as initiatives, we've just completed the diaper drive, so we, we collected, um. I, I forget how many, uh, the report. Was around like four hundreds, um, packages, so that was really well done of us. Um, we are working on, uh, community naloxone programs, so, um. We're an affiliate for reporting. Hopefully, we'll be able to work with other departments as we get further in. Um, using some of the opioid funds. We have worked with the, um, Essex Health and Fire Departments, as well as the Manchester School. To organize a life safety skills training for students. Hopefully, that'll happen next fall. Um, uh, we have a mother visiting partnership, um, so new mothers get a visited, visit from our, uh, public health nurse. As well as, uh, blood pressure screenings.
Mm-hmm.
Um. We are working with the Regional Youth Prevention Network, trying to get, um, a good understanding and, and work with them on some, uh, local. Programming for students of, in, in addition to the life safety skills training. Uh, you know, welcome to spring. We're doing all of our seasonal, uh, openings and, you know, uh, we've done our. First round of food inspections. Uh, we've had a couple of turnovers. Uh, Rich Nails is on the grind. It's just opened up at the Mac. Um, we have another, uh. Oh my gosh, all of those, no, uh, a lovely storefront that's gonna go in just around the, the corner there on School Street, right at the bottom of School Street.
Oh, the, yeah, wine and.
Wine and food and.
Yeah.
I apologize for not remembering the name of the company. Yeah, storefront, uh, but, uh, lovely, lovely people. Um, we're actually holding our mosquito control, uh, annual review of the. Um, sorry, Northeast Mosquito Control is coming to our, um. A public hearing on May twenty-second for vector.
Yes. Just to suggest that when you do a public hearing, you might make sure you work with Tiffany. Get the word out to all of us who will use electronic media.
So my understanding is it, it is.
Okay.
She was notified that, that that was happening.
Is that, that is a topic that I think a lot of people in town would be interested if they ran across it. But, um, not all, everybody subscribes to the cricket. Even those of us who's, who subscribe to the cricket don't always read all the legal notices.
Uh, right, no, it's, it should be, um, both in the tide and on the website, I believe.
But, yeah, there's also the.
Maybe we put it.
She might put it in the Manchester, uh, what, where, when. Um. That's got about five thousand subscribers.
So many people need Facebook, though.
Well, yeah, yes, but, but, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not generally the one who tells Tiffany where to put it, just that. It's a thing, but I will ask her specifically if she have that.
At least of a mosquito. Many of the things that you listed are not of great general interest, but. Mosquito prevention, um.
Okay, absolutely. Uh, same with the household hazardous waste collection event on June fourteenth.
Yeah, that, yeah, that one's important, but it's all usually oversubscribed.
It's very well subscribed.
Yeah, so.
Oversubscribed, I don't know.
What that means is.
At capacity.
You're at capacity.
It's, you, you have a good turnout.
Yes, we do.
Very good turnout, yes.
But. The, it's the hearings that I'm, that I'm worrying about that, that, um. Affect a lot of people in town and a lot of people in town. Don't follow your agendas closely enough.
Sure, okay, yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll work with Tiffany to be more, uh, transparent, definitely.
And.
We have.
But sometimes we have plenty of notice when we had the hearing about cigarettes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had one person who actually lived in the town, who is responsible in selling cigarettes. And no one else from the town came, but.
Yeah.
I, I was.
Kathy was here.
Kathy was there, but.
And well, it was very important.
The mosquito people show up for that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We, we had, um. A full agenda at the end of last year. And we've been notified by the state that, uh, some of the funds, the grants that were coming through for that. Um, are probably not gonna be coming through, or at least not at the levels that we had hoped, so. And there may be some changes going forward on what we're able to do.
Mm-hmm.
Surprise, surprise.
Common issue.
On the, do they still pay for the vaccine, the flu vaccine?
I think we're, we're really kind of, uh, hoping that the state labs stay open, but, uh, in, in the. Light of, um, working the people, we were able to get an intern to come this year. Um, unfortunately, it's unpaid. The state was, uh, you know, the program was a paid internship. Um, but the person agreed to work with us, um, without being paid, you know, or on the hope that maybe the money will come through, but, you know. Uh, so that, that'll be, uh, lovely, uh. Uh, July and August, get about a hundred and sixty hours, so.
Got a question, uh, I'm just looking at the.
Got a question, uh, I'm just looking at the projects that you're, you're just kind of running down here. Private well data collection, how is that going? I know that there was a regulatory update, was it maybe two years or so ago?
Last year, yes.
Or whenever it was.
Yeah, no, no, because I'm, I'm very aware that we're coming up on that, uh, one-year anniversary of it. Uh, we had asked for voluntary compliance. We had quite a few people, um, you know, submit their information to us. Tiffany had worked with us to get a, um, a handout that was very clear for folks, uh, so that was very helpful. We are like putting all of the information together. Um, it's, it is, uh, time-consuming to turn that around into usable, um, data that we can, um, put information and then pull out, you know, like what's the average depth of well and that kind of thing, um, which is one of the things we had hoped to do, um, that is one of the things I hope the intern will be able to work on. As far as getting to a point where everybody is in compliance, that is not yet there. Um, but we have, uh, like I said, there's been a lot of people who have been very willing to work with us and, uh, to get that information into the Board of Health. But as far as putting it into a format that I can, uh, let loose into the town's, um, you know, GIS, uh, I, I would hesitate to do that at this point, just because I would, uh, the inaccuracies are potential inaccuracies are just not.
Just in general, how many of the wells have you heard from at this point? Regardless of whether they're in compliance or what they're doing or not doing.
How many have I heard from?
Yeah. I remember in the discussion, maybe there were a hundred wells in town.
Fifty-five.
Fifty or fifty-five, so that's more than half.
Yeah, and, and that's just off the top of my head, a number. Um, and that includes a couple of the new wells that we've had, uh, at King's Way, they all have wells, um, floor.
Loading place.
Loading places, a lot of people in Loading Place, a lot of people University Lane, um.
The problem is that the remainder of the wells, we don't know whether they're going.
You don't know what you don't know.
Right, right.
There's no mandatory, uh, reporting for them at this point, so.
There is an effort to go through the files to find the old well reports if there are, and, and that's, that's very slow, but we are working on it in our.
Just curious, I know there were a lot of wells that were.
Yes.
Often not used, have been dead for many years.
That, that computer program that's gonna list septic in wells. And you just hit the address and it gives you the whole history will be fantastic and be able to answer any question, when and if it's ever loaded.
You gotta get the data.
You gotta get the data.
Partially loaded up.
Sounds like maybe halfway there or something, I don't.
Yeah, uh, well, you know, um, it's, it's more the data behind the, the, um, cause there is, the program is there. Um, we're working on making sure it is accurate, is really our, my big issue with it. Um, cause I don't wanna release it, there's some that are listed as wells with the groundwater and then vice versa, so.
Okay, just curious, cause I hadn't heard anything since the regulatory discussion.
Absolutely.
I knew that was a, a big unknown.
Yes, it still feels like a big unknown to me, but we won't get there. You know, I am one person, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing as best as I can.
Oh. Not for this year, but the seniors in high school have to do score projects. There's some data entry sort of thing, if you could work with them back here.
Interestingly enough, I did go to the school and I did offer, uh, community service hours, nobody has applied.
Okay, good, thank you. Sorry the result is what it is, but.
I, I'm, you know, we don't pay enough.
Oh, wait, wait, what about Essex Tech? Would there be any type of internship that might be related?
I can ask.
Sure, I'm, I will absolutely take help from wherever it comes.
And congratulations on your masters.
Thank you, thank you very much, um. I don't know, I don't think I added it, but it turns out I got the award for, um, uh, student success and leadership. For helping to connect, uh, an online study group, so.
I just found out on Tuesday, I think, they just told me on Tuesday. I was very excited.
I got an award too.
Oh, I would ask you to, when you have the time, read our minutes, because I think that, uh, we have a much better idea of not only what's going on, but the complexity and the number of revises and re-reviews that are necessary, so.
Um, Becky Jakes was our representative on the liaison queue.
Well, I was actually, yeah, most recently, I, I talked to Wendy, um, the other day. It's just the, the Thursday mornings, um, at eight-thirty, I'm tougher made to meet, so I do wind up looking at the meeting minutes and stuff like that more than attending the meetings.
And, and you give us liaison report based on that, and so.
But it's not a bad idea, maybe a couple of times a year, uh, something like that. Doesn't have to be quarterly, cause I mean, I'm looking and seeing quarterly, I think that's too much, but a couple of times a year for you to come by. And say this is what's going on is, oh.
Times with me, I think the board is, uh, you know, it's good to have boards meet each other.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Anything to say?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And everyone.
Good afternoon.
Everyone.
I'm sorry, I know you work long day.
It's not evening until I've had dinner and then, then it's even, so.
How we doing? Right? Keep going. Uh, Greg, I don't know, did you download the presentations or should I? There's a person online that you can share it if you'd rather do it that way.
Definitely we should put it on the screen.
Right, do you want them to be the host or you can, if you wanna give permission to Sean or Jeff, that's the, the consultants that's online, um, who has the. Otherwise, uh, if you want to, that's fine too, but just.
Sorry, should pull it up, Chuck?
Yeah, I think Greg will give you permission to share your screen and when we get to it, you know, we start through.
Yep, sounds good, no problem.
Um, while we're pulling that up, I guess those drought was on, um, the agenda as well tonight. You guys, nice rainy day, we get to talk about drought again. Seems like that's always the case.
Always the case.
So I, I did put a little memo in the packet, hopefully you're able to read it, but, you know, I'm not trying to belabor the point, just because there was some question at town meeting, also, you know, just in general in the community. Um, so, you know, we have a registration with DEP, very specific about, you know, the things we need to comply with. Uh, likewise, DEP is in charge of all that. They are very specific about what we need to comply with. It was definitely on purpose that the drought management plan of the state was coinciding with when they renewed the registrations and trying to basically pass down all the requirements of the drought management plan through the registration, that was a very concerted effort. So that's, you know, we're kind of seeing the fruits of those labors and why. While, while things are happening, uh, so, you know, that, that's how we got, uh, the, the update that we did on the bylaw during town meeting. That's a requirement within our registration, so that was not just a, hey, you know, let's, let's do another bylaw or, you know, that was a requirement. So, you know, all these things have kind of been at play, um, really at the mercy of this drought management task force that is, you know, meets, the, the next meeting is May seventh. They're gonna say whether or not we're in a drought. It's very much regional, it's not water supply or even town supply specific. They have a whole bunch of carve-outs for Mass Water Works or Mass Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, you know, NWRA communities versus private communities, you know, or smaller communities. So it, it's just a lot, so if you just wanna kind of look at just Manchester, you know, we basically have to do whatever the drought task force says. And we're supposed to enact those restrictions based on your authority as the water commissioners to restrict non-essential use. That's where that very specific definition of non-essential use came from. These are all kind of how we got to where we are.
Yeah.
If you guys have any questions, I'd have to answer them, but that's what they're looking for. Every time we do enact a restriction, which is, you know, theoretically already opted out, I have a Senate form to DEP that says we enacted the restriction. Every year, and when we do our annual statistical report, I will tell them all the different dates that we enacted them and then lifted the restrictions. Uh, so that's just reporting requirements. I don't think at this point, people are, you know, keep it score. Think at some point, people will start to keep score and they'll be upset or not, if, you know, depending on, you know, what they, what they think, um, you know, is the reasonable.
People, you don't mean citizens, you mean?
No, I mean.
Regulators.
Regulators, yes, uh, so.
We need to distinguish between people and regulators.
Sorry, yeah, regulators are people too, often.
When you say keep score, in other words, all right, we told you to have this restriction in place, how many of you guys did that?
Yeah, so, you know, like the critical three is, you know, that's the strict one. Right now, we're still believing on level two. Uh, Wednesday, they'll meet to decide if we can go to level one or level zero. And we're almost always in level one now, which is restrictive, which we've never been restrictive before. So that's, you know, there's definitely a learning curve there, so I think we'll get that learning curve. You know, that they're gonna look at, you know, we just cleared level three critical three times a year. I only see two corresponding bands in your town, you know, like something like that. So, you know, I thi- I think that's where we're at.
So when they meet, um, in a couple of days, what's the data, the period of performance, the, the data that they're gonna be looking at? It's not gonna be taken into account the rain we're getting today, right?
Right, well, so they surprised me, actually, last time, I remember, if you guys remember, you voted, and they weren't supposed to take into account the, it's, it's really supposed to be a monthly, so like, right now, they would be looking back at. They'd be looking at that in April, not the last week, you know, first week of May. Uh, but I think last time they actually did.
Oh, good.
Uh, they, cause we went from three to two.
Right.
And, um, so that, I think they did look at that, although I'm not in the room, maybe they, maybe they were like, oh, the stream flow and whatever stream was, you know, was higher and therefore we're going to level two. I mean, it's supposed to be much more scientific, but I think there's still an element of, you know, trying to knock.
Do they, do they meet regular scheduled times or is it really driven by the weather?
I think it's regularly scheduled.
So it's always, whether you say Wednesdays, so this is.
Yeah, it's the first week of the month. Uh, you know, this is May seven, I think last time it was, you know, April ninth or something like that, so, you know, it's that. Call it the first Wednesday of every month.
Okay.
Is this important? Meeting at the town level.
Right, so the, the bylaw does give us the authority to.
Us, meaning?
The water environment slash the.
Okay.
The commissioners, police, whoever, uh, to impose bans, so that's strictly through bylaw. That's nothing, the state will not be knocking on doors or driving down the road and.
So we are responsible for telling people that they can't water their wells. How nuts.
Yes, uh, yeah.
When, when the state says, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna say it's now, uh, say level three, they have their own publicity to say that.
Right.
So people will hear that, but they haven't heard it from us yet, but in theory, within a day or two, they're supposed to hear it from us.
And I, I do believe we have heard it more on the news. And I think that's direct function of DCR and DP, you know, talking to the news stations or newspapers or whatever. And that, you know, coming to fruition that way, certainly not from us, or, you know, we will get calls from Gloucester Times and sometimes Eric got the cricket, but, you know, for the most part, um, you know, asking for imposing restrictions. Rockport was in the news recently because they're having issues with water supply. And certainly, if we are having issues with our water supply, you know, we wanna communicate that, but we, we really have that. So I, I did put in the.
A lot from the citizens when they discover that it's hand watering and, and one day a week and on a, on a, when we're only in a level one drought and there's no problem in town with the water, it's just.
I, I moved the, you know, this is, this has been a end game, I think, for, through the registration process for actually over a decade. Like they, they tried to do this previously and they lost the court. We actually just, uh, finished our court appeal of the Water Management Act, uh, registration condition, so, but we, we did go back to court, uh, in just last month, um, to the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts to say that DP and to say do not have the right to infringe on our registration, our registrations are ours to use how we shall choose. But it seems like we're probably not gonna win this time.
When you say we?
They, so many water suppliers across the state with these registrations.
Okay.
Uh, we all kind of joined suit and filed this appeal. We, we were part of that, but even if we weren't, any registration during that part.
And then the key thing for the consumer is that the state will say level three or level two or level one. And we have to, at this point, we have to say the same.
And.
But the appeal was, we'll decide what we think it should be for our particular community, and they looked at it. Okay.
So, I mean, technically, we're supposed to comply, but what if we don't?
Right, so I, I don't think anything right now, I mean, like I said, it is up to us to enforce when we, when you guys do enact the restriction, so, you know, like I said, we're typically only gonna try and do educational, we're not gonna, you know, if somebody says, hey, my neighbor's watering and their sprinklers on and it's raining out, you know, we'll try and tell them like, hey, you should get a rain sensor, you should, you know, only water at night, you know, do all these things that make a lot of sense. Um, don't save on your bill, all these types of things. But the, I don't think the state is gonna, you know, say, hey, we issued this level three restriction on April third and you guys didn't enact it until May third or something like that, like. It's not gonna happen that way, but I think at some point they will look at, we had three level, critical, level three critical droughts, you guys didn't do any restrictions, why is that? We'll have to have that conversation. If it gets to be habitual and, you know, we're non-responsive, then we could see a consent order or something like that. I don't think they'll start there.
I mean, I guess my question is, say, if we have plenty of water here, but they say we're in a level three, what's to stop us from saying, well, no, we're really in a level one here?
Or no.
Or not, yeah.
I mean, I, I think eventually it will catch up to us, but they're not going to go water supplier by water supplier right now.
Okay, we'll level until we get caught.
So have. Have you issued any limits that have differed from the state so far, or have you just set up?
Not sure what.
In other words, it's a level three and you get this statement, this is level three and you don't do anything. It's not like, you know, we think it's gonna be a level two for us and so.
I'm, I'm not doing anything. You guys are the ones that are voting the.
All right, yes, okay.
Bring to us.
Right, so I, you know, I always try and tell you, and you, the way it's worked so far, and I see it this, working this way in, you know, this summer, in the long, you know, coming years is, when we get to level three critical, even if we're okay, we should be very cognizant of, we don't wanna get too far ahead of, you know, the way the supply is going and, you know, we, we always have potential to be in a prolonged drought. So I don't wanna minimize the fact that we could be, uh, but looking at our historical trend, looking at the height of reservoir, looking at our drawdown in the well, like, we're fine with water supply. But if the state's issuing a critical, level three critical drought, and we stay there for a month or two months and we don't do anything, then we do have an issue, we're gonna look pretty stupid, so I'm here to make us.
I don't think that makes us look stupid, I think that makes us look sensitive to the needs of the community.
Right, but. I, I think we don't wanna.
Defy it perhaps, but.
Yeah, well, but we, we don't wanna, and I think anticipate.
Right, we, we gotta look at the trend.
We gotta look.
And we wanna act before things get bad, right? Yes, I think that's also.
A delayed reaction, but this.
Unnecessarily tied.
Right, but that's why you look at a trend, you know, information's a point in time, but you put together the trend and you wanna start.
So like, there's, there's a couple other. So like, there's, there's a couple other, like, the things that water suppliers were advocating for before they put this rule in place is like. They're basing this on the state drought plan, why shouldn't we be able to have a local drought plan and we follow? So technically, right now, even if that wasn't available to us, we do not have a Manchester drought plan. So like, maybe that's something we should do. Um, but that's, you know, you have to do some work on, I think, do some engineering, some math.
So.
But right now, that would not count in place of the state.
Yeah, I understand.
So is there some sort of a publicity initiative that's gonna happen in the next month or two?
Right, so I am gonna be at a meeting next week or the week after with the D C R and the state about messaging of their drought. So the state declared drought, um, to say, like, this is the problem we're having, it's like, look, it's been raining, our water supply is fine, there's no. Reason for me to tell my consumers to, you know, curb their use. Um, so how do, you know, how do we, how do we square that with what you're telling us we have to do? Um, so we'll, we'll see what they say about that, and then also, uh, the Water Management Acts, uh, Advisory Committee to D P. I'll be on that, so, you know, that's, this was part of the Water Man Management Act, um, you know, rules and regulations, so. See, see if they're willing to revisit it or consider other alternatives, like allowing us to have our own local drought plans, something like that.
Well, I think consumers need to know how the process goes, you're, we're not entirely in charge here.
And so I think that's what you mentioned at the, um, town meeting was, you know, we'll have Tiffany do.
Yeah.
Some, you know, so we're, we're Tiffany on, you know, how we message all this and, you know, the consumable for the average person.
Oh, let's go to the goodness.
Not solving any problem.
You are, you are?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You're in charge.
I'll, I'll, I'll flick the switch here.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is not meant to be a very intensive, uh, presentation. We have done a lot of work over the last year. Uh, last week at town meeting, voters approved to, you know, take it the next step, which will be designed, so we thought it was worthwhile, it was in the works for a while anyway. To talk to you guys about kind of the sighting of D P W up at School Street. Um, if you wanna. This is, you know, we. This, uh, is more of an engineering analysis, but, you know, previously, we had done a sighting analysis. As well as the facility master plan, which talked about, you know, the pros and cons moving D P W. Uh, this is just kind of a vicinity plan showing, you know, the kind of cloudy area up there, School Street, where we, you know, what we're looking at. Uh, the circles are kind of all the different areas around town where D P W has a footprint. Whether it's just cold storage like at home station, or the wastewater treatment plant where we have a lot of other materials. Or even, you know, Town Hall where, you know, the administrative staff is. So that, you know, this is just what we're trying to show here, get everybody kind of acclimated, uh, if you can go to the next one. Uh, so, you know, part of the. Work that we've done to date as part of this kind of a agreement with Tetra Tech who's here tonight. Uh, is to do survey, to do borings, geothermal evaluation, solar evaluation. Just kind of get a sense for the overall needs and requirements of the site, as well as the facility. Um, so that's, it might be hard for you guys to see back there actually, but, uh, you know, we, we actually did two rounds of borings, one for kind of the. Site where the previous compost was, and then another round where we looked at. If we were to do what we're calling a kind of a campus, where public safety was also located up at the site. Kind of that lower intersection of Atwater and school, uh, you know, how are those soils and, you know, uh, potential. You know, building, uh, considerations there. So that's what we're looking at here, if you can go to the next slide.
Are you thinking about geothermal?
We are, yep, so, you know.
Ground source.
Ground source.
You know, geothermal, ground source can get interchanged, but, you know, yeah, ground source, like C S D.
Okay.
So, you know, as part of that, what we're calling, you know, what you're looking at here is kind of a, kind of proof of concept. For just the D P W facility, so this was the overall intent of this engagement was to, you know, really look at this and. There's a lot of needs and wants in the facility master plan and the site analysis, making sure that, you know, this site can accommodate that. Um, you know, kind of the way your footprint you're looking at here is kind of the already cleared and leveled site. I mean, there is definitely tiers to the site, but, you know, buildable kind of area that already exists. Uh, we also looked at circulation, uh, different analysis on, you know, being able to move around the site, whether it's, you know, our operations. But also the, um, deliveries or town, uh, you know, residents that come up for certain things, that's the thing. We also have, uh, emergency egress out onto kit glass, so it's not just a up a steep hill into a site, it's, you know, being able to get out the backside. So we, you know, we kind of did a lot of.
Just a question, so the, the site evaluation though that you did, didn't, you didn't find any showstoppers?
Right, so that's kind of where we're, what I'm trying to say at the, you know, end of the next slide maybe is like, you know, this, this all kind of worked out, like the proof of concept worked. Um, you'll see further on, you can go to the next slide group. So.
Before you go to the next slide.
It's kind of the same slide.
Looks as if you've pretty much covered the readily developable area, where would the public safety?
Right, so that's, this, so what we were looking at as part of this proof of concept was. The additional area at the bottom of, at the intersection of, uh, school and Atwater. So that's the additional area that we would, you know, in the idea that it's a public safety. This would be your fire station garage, it would also likely be two level. Uh, so then it kind of works into the, what we're showing as the D P W garage and administrative area. Uh, so the building kind of near that corner. Uh, so, you know, there's a D P W building that we're, you know, trying to cite. If we were to add police and fire either now or in the future, how would it kind of all work together and make sure that we answer that question now? So that it gives us that opportunity in the future. So that's what we were looking at, that's why we did the additional borings kind of down on that corner. Um, and so by kind of terracing the site a little bit, or having, you know, multi-level buildings, we can kind of make it all work. Um, without having, you know, one skyscraper or, you know, all these, you know.
Can you just tell us what all of those structures or figures are there?
Right, so in the, in the upper left corner, uh, that's the D P W admin or administrative, you know, area as well as the garages. So, you know, we have a couple of bays for, you know, active mechanical, but then, you know, there's a water bay, uh, uh. Going on down line. Um, you'll see further on, you know, we did do a fair amount of programming of the building itself, so we have kind of some. Thoughts and concepts for the area as built, but just in terms of blocks, that's what that is. Uh, to the right, those, uh, to the right of that, it's just like your concrete block bins where you have like different, you know, womb or, you know. Granular material, so it's just like open blocks that, you know, you can drive a front end loader in to pick up and put it, you know, load up a dump truck and send it out. Uh, kind of working away around clockwise, the next kind of building that you see after the egress there is the. Um, salt shed, so we'd have to relocate the salt shed up there for, you know, winter operations. Uh, the block next to that is actually the cell tower, so there is a cell tower there that we had to maintain access to. On the opposite side of the cell tower going around clockwise still, uh, is what we're calling like the water department closed. Cold storage, so it's, you know, just a covered building, but it's not, you know, had electricity but not heat or anything like that. So there's a lot of water stock and stuff like that that we need to keep. Uh, and then the longer.
By water stock, you mean?
No, no, yeah, that, that all pays at the water treatment. Wherever else, but, yeah, this is just water department, um, you know, we have. Stuff that we use to maintain the, you know, lift station, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Um, doesn't need to be in the main garage area or the admin area, but needs to be covered somewhere. Uh, then the, uh, the last building there is more equipment and coal storage. Uh, for highway department, uh, which would also include like cemetery, um, you know, parks, all that kind of stuff, so. All that kind of equipment as well as cover stores for stuff like our sidewalk tractor, M T attracting, you know, so other equipment storage. Um, so that's, that's kind of how we work around the site. In the, the block in the middle there is really fuel depot and a wash, truck wash down, that's something we don't have now. That would be beneficial to the fleet and as well as to police and fire.
And the tennis courts?
That's actually just parking, but yeah, pickleball is what we like to call. Just the parking.
You got a lunchtime activity.
Yeah, health and safety, you know, uh, so, yeah, that, that's how we're working our way around the site. Um, this is very conceptual, again, proof of concept. Make sure we're not forgetting anything, obviously, some things will probably be hostrated or downsized in the future. But this gets everything there, obviously, we, we, like I said, we have kind of used up the whole site. Uh, but we've left that kind of additional expansion available down below. But, so I think we've, we've covered all the bases, there were no showstoppers when it comes to survey, boring, solar. Um, those types of things, um, you know, all of this, you know, in a, in a future, calamity, even, you know. Actual design development, we would start talking about, um, you know, the drainage and where we, you know, round everything, utilities, stuff like that. Um, you know, how they come in, where they get sighted.
Is the bottom, the bottom area, I assume that's a fairly steep grade going down to the excess road or whatever it is.
Right, so what we're showing here is, um, you know, the, the kind of, if you go up there now, if you've been up there since it was the compost or even, uh, before that one, it's like a town compost area. It's kind of like a hard right, that, that's still maintained there, but we're actually, you know, when we do the final grading here, we're trying to. Make it a much softer, uh, come down around, so, you know, as you come up to the site and take a hard right to circulate the site wherever you're going. Uh, when you, when you exit, you're actually kind of coming around up and then down, uh, at kind of a softer grade.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just looking at those bottom structures, you can't push them further back because the grade starts to get pretty steep. Yes, that's why there's a lot of trees down there, but there's a reason for that, that's really not very usable.
That's, that's kind of the end of the functional area of the site, so, you know, in previous iterations of the site analysis and the facility master plan. I think this is like a seven acre site, really only four, maybe five or.
And I assume the same issue with the top, top edge going down to Atwater.
Not nearly as bad as on the southern edge, the southern edge is like really like a cliff where the northern edge is more kind of a gradual.
And I will say, you know, we're just showing you this one picture, this one proof of concept, when, within the, you know, last several months, we did look at. Sighting a building kind of at the corner, kit glass in Atwater, so like that part of the site. Um, you know, further down towards, uh, you know, that whole kind of bottom area, and like, there's advantages and disadvantages to all those types of things. I think one of the other things that we have to keep in the back of our mind is, even though it looks good on paper and in this plan. Uh, you know, there are setbacks that we have to maintain, there are kind of buildable footprints that we're supposed to be within without getting variances and stuff like that. Um, from the different entities besides yourself, so, you know, planning board, CONCOM also have jurisdiction, uh, there will be. Um, you know, wetlands that we are in the buffer zone or, you know, encroaching on the buffer zone, so, you know, we have to kind of. Hang you know, all of those things, so obviously the flatter, more already cleared area that's setback from the roads. Is the most advantageous and cheapest to build. But that's not to say we can't do other stuff as well. So, again, we didn't wanna get too deep into the details, but this is, you know, we did do a fair amount of programming, uh, and floor plan, a kind of analysis. Uh, in terms of just making sure we have all the basics covered, but also, you know, what are. These multi-purpose areas that we would want to incorporate, whether it's in a just D P W site, but also potentially in the future being a. Uh, public safety type campus. Um, so, you know, we tried to be very cognizant of not. Overbuilding to the extent that, you know, we're planning on police and fire being there anytime soon, but also. Understanding that there are definitely limitations to the area available for current town operations, and wanna make sure that we could fit as many of those. In as possible, um, so that's, that's what we're looking at here, we have a first floor plan, second floor plan, obviously the garage area. There is no second story on the garage, it's just kind of a bigger building. Um, but then on the left-hand side, where you see all the different colors, those are the different, you know, whether it's a meeting room area or training rooms or. Other multi-purpose rooms for equipment demos and stuff like that, but also, um. You know, the instant commands response, if there's a, you know, need if down here, this, the room we're in would be the typical place for that or the schools. Um, you know, this is kind of offering that as a secondary, or hopefully in, where we get there will be a primary. Function of that area. So I don't have really a lot to say here, except did a lot of thinking, obviously, this is where we would. Get into a bigger design, uh, effort where we would. Start cutting this down or, you know, making some trading or, you know, if we forgot something, you know, other things would have to go in. But in terms of square footage, I think we're still where we had always been previously.
Does that, so on the square footage piece, um. How much additional square footage, o- obviously, when it comes to a lot of the. Um, materials and stuff you have right now, you don't have anything covered, you know, you're just a bare minimum. When it comes to the administrative space and stuff on the left, how much additional square footage is that than what you have right now?
I've not done that analysis, so I'd, I'd have to look.
So I'm not sure.
Certainly additive.
Right, right, so I guess when we get to the point where we need to do the horse trading, because. Our eyes might be bigger than our pocketbooks, right? I, I think it would be helpful for the taxpayers to understand. How much additional square footage we have. And when it comes to the, especially the administrative space, we really need to be looking at. All of your facilities, right, in that facilities master plan, where are all of these pockets of administrative space? Because when you start to take Town Hall and separate it, okay? What you wind up doing is building more administrative space, making it more difficult in some instances to share. You know, we're, we're establishing condominium over in the Mason's Building, we're gonna move some offices, you know, a couple over there. That's gonna free up room here, right? So you take D P W, your office, you move it to this new place, okay, that frees up room in Town Hall. I think in order to help the taxpayers understand what they're gonna be getting for their dollar. We have to be clear on what we're gonna do with all the space we're freeing up, right? And, and so I, I would just ask that you not think about this as just one project, but the beginning of some dominoes. And I, I think we've got to do some explaining around the rest of it, um, so that would be my number one. I'd also encourage us, um, you know, number two, as we do the horse trading. To, you know, don't spend a hundred thousand dollars to, to protect a fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment, right? You, you want to be mindful of what really needs that, that storage and what doesn't. I mean, not every vehicle requires garage, okay? The expensive invest, you know, things that you invest in, obviously, but a lot of people in downtown, they don't. They don't have garages for their, you know, for their regular vehicles, right? So I just be mindful of what you're asking for from people who may not have that for their own vehicles. And I, I think the, um, I think the last comment, um, I have is I would just really. We, we have to deliberate as a town on whether or not we want certain public safety. Um, activities to be on the other side of the highway. And I just would slow down that, I, I like the fact that you've planned. And thought about, you know, and looked at the site to see if there are any showstoppers. But as far as promoting, you know, the fire department moving over there, I, I think we just need to. Slow that horse a little bit.
So.
So we have a deliberate deliberation across the town.
Right, for sure. So a couple of things on some of the comments you escaped. Um, so, one in terms of coal storage at our existing facility, you know, we actually did have several. At least two coal storage buildings that. So like, you know, we are not necessarily asking for more than we've ever had, just more than we have today, maybe.
And that's what I'm trying to get you to.
We will definitely get more into the weeds on, you know, which piece of equipment warrants that sort of thing, but, you know, all of our. All of the equipment that I'm envisioning, you know, sidewalk tractor and, uh, you know, bigger dump trucks that, you know, have the, you know, our brakes are rotting and. Uh, you know, different things like that, you know, those are multi hundred thousand dollar pieces.
Right, yeah, and I'm not asking you to justify it now, I'm just saying, the, these are the things, these are the questions people are gonna ask, so you'd wanna have those.
So, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's certainly top of mind when we, you know, even when we got to where we are today. Um, the other thing I, I guess I would just say is that, yeah, certainly the, uh, public safety, whether or not that can move up there. And whether or not it's, you know, police and fire or just one or the other, um, yeah, that's totally up to everybody, I guess. As part of this, uh. Part of our scope and, you know, getting to the next page, so, you know, there was this money approved at town meeting and wanting to, you know, you know, we need to. Figure that out, um, before we, you know, put a bow on this or sign off on anything, what we, we think as a project team would be helpful. Would be to have either some or all of you guys, as well as other stakeholders within the town, kind of form a stakeholder committee where. We kind of vet some of these things, because making these decisions now, or not even making these decisions, but just having these conversations now at a. More, you know, workshop type environment, rather than me presenting to you this.
I was gonna ask, that was gonna be my next question is, did you envision having some type of a.
Right, so.
Separate committee to evaluate. Separate committee to evaluate.
Couple, one is like, I think we should have a workshop meeting now with anybody who's interested, and then I think we do need to have a stakeholder group task force or otherwise. For the next phase of design for sure, um, so, you know, that's something that we kind of wanted to explain tonight. Take any feedback on this kind of, like I said, proof of concept, on even uh iteration. And make sure that we can put a good bow on this before we move to the next phase. Great, if you want to go to the next slide, I, I don't think we really had too many more slides, but, you know, that's. Again, this is just kind of a general update, this is not a finalized plan, this is just kind of showing you that we did a lot of work and a lot of homework to get through this, um. Yeah, this is just more bullets, we can send the slides on, I don't think it's worth.
Are these bays gonna be tall enough to get an excavator or anything like that in to work on?
So we only have a backhoe and a mini, uh, it'll be big enough for our biggest piece of equipment, which will be better than dump trucks and to be able to. May or may not appear so on the page, but the, you know, the size of the bays on this are the exact same that we would have at the, that we have at the existing.
You, um, if you jump forward two more slides, Chuck, it has the, um, it has the.
So like, these are kind of typical elevations, uh, that we were thinking, so at the very top there, you have the administrative side. This has a little bit better, you know, as shown here, not, you know, any decision have been made or anything. But, you know, there are some architectural elements here that actually this is kind of modeled after the, um, doctor's office next door, so. Again, the colors are just kind of there for a palette, but the finishes and the finish, uh, you know, exterior, that kind of stuff is. In keeping with the next door neighbor, again, this could be cement, concrete block, this could be something else, but. You know, this is just kind of a concept that we're showing, again, the, the kind of middle there, that's the, uh, garage, uh, bays, again. Could be CMU, could be, you know, a sloped roof, could be a flat roof, like, these are all decisions that would be made in the future. But we wanted to kind of show like, there was a fair amount of thought that went into what it could be.
Those are planned to be a steel building or would.
You tell me. Right, so, and like, there's a lot of faux finishes out there now that are almost as good, you know, we're not talking sheet or shape, but, you know, definitely, you can. Make it look sheet or shake, you know, so, yeah, again, this would be a element that we would probably. Lead to a future stakeholder group, uh, but, you know, the, the concept is kind of there that, you know, we could. I guess I, just to put it out there perfectly honest, uh, what do you, how do you guys want to make the decision on whether or not public safety? Or any element, you know, whether it's police or fire or neither or both. Well, I, well, I guess I would.
I think Chuck is saying that if, if we knew we wanted to move either police or fire. To this campus, there may be some economies of scale in the planning and design. So, it's a valid question to ask, I, I.
Middleton's doing the same thing right now, I think. I do everything.
So, I think we have to have a conversation about that though, because in, just in my mind, you know, the sensitivity is around the fire department. You know, Jake shows us the heat map every month of where the incidents are, and they're nowhere near that, you know, so it's, it. Putting fire on the other side of the highway is a concern. Police, I'm a little less, um. Concerned about that because your people are patrolling, always on the roads, right? Um, so I could be really open to that, but fire makes me really, really nervous.
So, kind of to that point and where I was going was, you know, I, I think we need to. At least talk more in depth about it at some point, not sooner, uh, but I think that. Uh, for us to make the best decisions for just DPW or any other potential, we need to kind of have a clearer direction.
So, would you suggest a public forum and what type of information? Will we bring to that?
Kind of, there's a list of questions I had in my head, it's like, do police and fire happen together, would it, would you want police to be at their site, so it's a DPW police? Which hasn't really been something we considered, like, I think that is actually. A reasonable thing for us to program into the site without using that little corner down below. Uh, but we haven't programmed that because we haven't kind of had any of that conversation, it's always been police and fire together or.
So, so I'm almost think, I'm, I'm almost thinking of this like the Rotunda decision, you know, we had to, we had to make, we had. Different options that were bandied about, and it came to a point where we had some concrete. Examples and cost of what that might entail, I wouldn't necessarily go to all of that detail for a meeting number one. But, um. It might be helpful to have an initial discussion with the residents on, here are some options and. Here are the questions we'd have to answer in order to get to a decision. Uh, like I said, I personally, the fire is what makes me nervous.
Well, and so kind of to that point is, if, if it's not a campus solution, which was only ever kind of just proof of concept level at this location anyway. The previous thought was that police and fire shared would be at Pleasant Street where the DPW opens up. If it's just fire, that could easily still talk about that spot, but are there other options that you're envisioning for? A fire only or even a share or, you know, re, rehab and play, like, so. The level that we've gone to for DPW has been site analysis, silly master plan, and now this proof of concept area. Taking into account, maybe there's other potential needs that would go up there. If we were to do a site analysis just for fire department or just for public safety. We might be able to inform these decisions, but we have not done that yet, so that would be something I would ask you guys, if you want us to do that or. So, maybe it needs to be budgeted and we need to do that level of analysis, but.
On, on the graphic that you had up there on the corner of Atwater, was that an assumption that it was both police and fire?
Right, so that footprint, based on the square footages of, and build out area that we needed. That, that area would work, uh, and then we, you know, went the next level of borings, you know, survey, you know, making sure it would be. A continuous site.
All right, well, my, my opinion is, wha- whatever happens, it's gonna be kind of a staged activity. Cause the money that's involved is not something that you're gonna be able to spend in one shot. And in other words. Haven't got to the numbers yet, but the numbers are significant.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry, you should ask that of me, not of him.
To the chair.
Thank you.
Uh, and this is actually for Nate too, is Pleasant Street. There are areas that might be compromised. Okay, where housing wouldn't be appropriate. Um, there are areas we can put housing down there, but if the whole, the whole site is not. Amenable, they probably couldn't put housing, the entire site. With that then.
I think that's, that's a really good question.
I have a big, I'm a big fan of putting everything together in one place, okay, but if, if that becomes a problem, then we can kill two birds with one stone. By taking that contaminator or that less than desirable area that is questionable, put the fire department there. But, uh, so this, I think that's just something.
So, I, I guess where you're going, I like where you're going and thinking about, in order to really fully assess our options. You did a site evaluation of School Street. Do we have a comparable site evaluation of Pleasant Street? And do we really know, are we sure which areas could be used for housing versus not? Have we already done that analysis?
Well, you're talking about just the soil analysis.
Yeah, I think that's where we would have to get into an MCP evaluation or a nineteen E, um, and so that is like. One of those things that could be, you know, if you found something that is extremely like a VOC that has a reportable limit. You know, and not knowing what we did at that DPW yard, you know, over the last hundred years. It's very hard to say what we did find in the soil, it could be totally innocuous and just the normal like hydrocarbons, petroleums. Those are easily remediated, but if it's something else that, you know, is more like the burn dump, mine street. That's obviously a different.
Closing our eyes and pretending it hadn't happened is a bad strategy.
No, and that, that's, I don't think what we're suggesting, I think it's just a matter of. When they occur, if you go in and you take a sample and you find something bad.
Have to deal with it.
You have to act, you have to act on, there's no, oh, we'll deal with this in five years. You have to act immediately, so that's kind of the, the balancing act where if we're doing it on an existing site that we're using. That could really hamper things.
Ah, okay, so the. My thought is what, kind of echoing, one of the things, one of many things. Is the duplication of office of, of administrative space. That perhaps rather than having a separate building for. Whatever public safety we share, have some possibility of adding on to the, uh, administrative area. For the DPW, um, not building it right away, but having it designed so that it can be expanded.
Yeah, I mean.
And share the, uh, larger spaces.
That, that picture looks lovely, but it looks like it's the size of town hall.
Scale.
We need some scale, if you, if you take a plan like that to the taxpayers and you say. We're gonna build an administrative facility for the DPW that's as large as town hall. Right, so, I, I want to be mindful of, again, the sharing of administrative space. What are we gonna do with the space we're freeing up here if your offices are moved there? Um, we've got to answer that question, I think, also, fire department, I know. There's some equipment there that probably needs some protection from the water, but do we really have to move it, is that a, is that, I know the police department floods. Regularly, but is there, is there a mandate for us to move the fire department, so I just think there are a few things we need to. Um, tell the whole story about, what, what are the requirements, is really what I'm asking to focus on, requirements, what problems are we trying to solve? We've got to get clear on that, and then we can start talking about designs. You know, you, you're trying to protect some equipment that you, that don't have, that doesn't have protection right now, you need some privacy and office space.
I, I don't want to sell us short, we have done a lot of that, and we have.
I'm talking about communicating it, not that you haven't done the work, it's, uh, I'm talking about to the, communicating it to the people who are gonna ask to pay.
Right, so I guess that's, that's why here tonight, communicate, but also to set up the next phase, which I believe should be some sort of workshop. That we can vet up these questions, whether it's a public meeting or just an open meeting with, you know, not the entire board, but. Use the members and other boards that, you know, have vested interest, like, happy to do that, we, we need to do that, I'm, that's what I'm promoting. So, but you tell me.
I wa- I want to go back to this issue about the testing of the existing site, because, because a lot of this. Planning and moving around is expecting that you can use that site for something else. Are those borings or the, that, that testing is gonna have to be done one way or another at some point?
So, we've talked to the, um, uh, LSP that did the work at the burn dump, just to kind of tell them our thought process here. And what they recommended was doing some sort of desktop analysis first, shorter money to kind of get a feel, you know, do some interviews, do some research. Come up with a, you know, memo report type, that thing. That's prior to taking samples and getting those samples, that's what Nate's talking about, that will have to be done for sure, but doing it now.
You want to wait till.
Yeah, so, yeah, that, I think, yeah, we will get there, but it's.
So what if we get a small group together to at least, uh, sketch out some options, right? That are worth pursuing and bringing to a public forum, that makes sense?
When, when you say it's wrong, but. Who would you see, what? Them as graphic.
So, um, with the major, other than the select board, right, who, who would be some major stakeholders?
Well, so just in terms of boards, I think, planning board, because this is in the LCD, so we need a special permit no matter what. And we, also, there's setback requirements that we may or may not be able to meet, whether we do this plan or a different one. So, you know, planning board at some level, you know. CONCOM, like I said, on that Atwater side where the buffers are right there, so, you know, no matter what, we will be, you know, with CONCOM. After that, I think.
Probably a couple of.
Yeah, I think, um, makes sense.
And some sort of board and some of the garage.
So what is the next, you know, let's just say we get this group together to sketch out some options. Worth pursuing, using the facilities master plan as a kind of a roadmap, high-level roadmap, right? What is the next step that? What is the next set of input you need to take, whatever your next step is? What would we be asking that team to do as a deliverable? Oh, you know.
Well, so I, I guess we could present what we've done to date at a more detailed level than we did tonight, cause like I said, tonight was just a proof of concept check-in. So, you know, we had done a lot of extra work, uh, on, you know, why we made these decisions, and so I would relate that to the group. Uh, and then we need some path forward on, um. You know, I, I still think we might be into the next level of design, which means the next appropriation before we can definitively say. You know, we're cutting out twenty percent of the square foot, you know, stuff like that, like, we're not there yet.
So I, yeah, I, I.
But in, in terms of like, existing base, potential uses of this space, if we're vacating or, you know.
I'm gonna ask you to do something I always ask you to do the opposite of, so bear with me, I'm gonna ask you to put your engineering hat on, okay? It's with requirements, right, I think it makes sense to get, when you talk about bringing people up to speed. I, I do think it makes sense to bring that small group up to speed on what the requirements are, what you think the requirements are, cause. Sometimes you have to do some horse trading on the requirements, right, before you go too far in the design. That, that's my concern, is we haven't really deliberated on requirements and, and, and that has some benefit to it.
Maybe we need some kind of overlay of what we have now, plus what we've lost over the years. And overlay it on top of what you have here to see what the difference is there.
Also, I'd like to.
A lot of that we addressed in the, yeah, initial DPW.
So there was a signing assessment that compared. Pleasant Street has DPW versus this site has DPW, um, so that, I think, gets into the first phase of that. Obviously, this is built out. A little bit differently, because, you know, more information now, more time, um, so, that's kind of where we're at.
Keep the scope within what could be managed, let's not put that group in charge of figuring out what, what can be done with the existing site.
I would like to do is sit down for. I'd like to see the two, two chiefs, Chuck, sit down. And find out if in fact it's viable as an entire municipal site on. There's pros and cons to that as well, before we start getting too far ahead, if all of a sudden.
Well, that's what, that's what I mean by requirements, okay, so what, requirement is, what problem are you trying to solve? Okay, really, that's what are requirements.
And updating.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we put the two chiefs into this, um, task force or do they become consultants to the task force?
So that's the chief.
Me and I was hoping I would be involved.
Yes, I would think so, if, if I may ask, when you, when you defined that area up at the corner of Atwater. Did you have in mind, or has there been any study about how many, how much square footage a police department needs?
Right, so that, that's part of.
So that, that number exists.
Yeah, and we were transposing that on that area, so we've.
Okay, so you know that.
Proof of concept wise, we're there, I purposely told our consultants not to put. Building on there, just show the area, because I thought showing the building would get a little too.
And, 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 and that was.
They do exactly this kind of discussion.
Yeah, and the police department and the fire department, I mean, those were two footprints that you kind of put up there and say, hey, you can.
Right, and again, I think, too low, so, you know, there's. Police fire, you know, you'd have garage area down low and then administrative on top, kind of similar to the DPW we're showing, although.
My initial thought is to put something. Put together a cricket article with some of these pictures and a description of what. We're looking for and ask.
Seek.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So if we had, like we did for the TA task force.
Parking on the facility master plan, so we should go do another addition.
But it's more specific. It's about, we're ready to start, you know, in earnest. Uh, designing some of these buildings, discern, determining which buildings we need and where they need to be. And we want some at-large residents to participate in a task force, right? And so.
Although that top picture scares me.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm not sure I would post a picture. If you tell people they've got to be rebuilding town hall, I mean, that's just it.
What is the square footage of that?
Yeah, I, I understand. We don't have a perspective on the size. It just looks scary. That's all.
I don't know. Leila, the architect's on the call. Leila, do you know off the top here how the square footage is of the administrative area? I don't, I don't know that we even put that level of detail.
No, we just.
It exists, but I don't think we.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we, we see that about like the first floor and the maintenance bays altogether is about sixteen thousand square feet. And keep in mind that under that administrative wing, there's a lot of support spaces that function with the maintenance bay. And, you know, for the staff when they come after incidents, the second floor is just about five thousand square feet.
And how big is this building? How big is this building?
So total, total square footage altogether would be approximately, uh.
I'm sorry.
Thousand square feet.
I'm sorry, my question was how big is town hall?
Oh, sorry, that I cannot say.
Think about twelve.
This building is twelve thousand square feet.
Six over six. Well, there are three floors, but.
Right.
Based on what Leila's saying, the administrative size, Leila is roughly five over five.
Yeah.
In terms of, of, of footprint.
But, yes, that is what it is. I mean, I'm not shying away from it where, you know, there are spaces that we don't have now that are programmed in here. There are consolidation spaces that make sense. I think there's a whole floor over at Seaside One that would come over here in the future, build those in there. So like, we have thought about these things.
But do we also have to consider the basement of this building is probably not. That can slide, but it doesn't become office space.
Then emergency response training that we couldn't hold at any town building.
But that's what I mean about the requirements. Before we start talking design, we can talk requirements with people. It helps them understand the why. And, and you don't get any money unless they understand the why. So, um, I, I really think that's going to be our first, um, focus.
And if I may say, just a quick, because, you know, from the architectural also engineering perspective, this is where the floor plans, which are the ones that come to the core. And which we dug into very much with, with Nate and Chuck's feedback about what is needed. And the whole thing was this was supposed to be pretty much pragmatic, based on operations. And feedback and lessons learned from how things, you know, would need to be improved or could move forward in the future. So I do think, yes, when we put elevations, it's just to give a general sense of what the aesthetics could look like. And we put the first one and the second one, but the meat and the core of this went into the programmatic relationships between the spaces. That are really perceived mostly in the plans.
Are we ready to put together the task force? Well, I'm sorry. And I'm afraid.
I mean, I can quarterback it, like I'll, I just want to get you guys on board, but, you know, I'll reach out to the chairs of. There's more we talked about. I'll put out some feelers to the town, put out an article.
I, I think we, for all of our task forces and committees, we do an open posting, right? So we determine what the makeup of the task force would be, who has to be represented. And then usually it's the chairs of those, or those committees themselves decide who's going to be represented on the task force. And for, you know, the at-large, we would do an open posting and see who's interested in interviewing.
Okay. In the American, we use. We have nine people. I've got, if you have one from the planning board, one from the Concom, Fincom, um, probably two at large. Police and Fire and DPW. Whether I said it or not, it's on KSG.
How many is that?
One, two, three, four, five, two for DPW.
Eight, nine.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're going and when they meet. You will strike them your. Requirements. This presentation more or less.
Yeah, no, so well, I think I see it doing, you know, get the people in a group. We'll just kind of give them the. Yeah, you know, the nickel tour if they want it, plus, you know, all this kind of background information, help them digest that. Listen to whatever feedback they have or questions they have on those things and then the next meeting will be the one where we really dive into.
How many people have you got? You got nine or ten?
Sorry, I lost track. Yeah, two at large, fire police, that's four. How many from DPW and select?
I think probably two from DPW probably. That's a big.
Two, that's ten.
Yeah, that's ten. That's why I was just doing the math.
If I had me and Nate or including.
Including you. That's it.
You have Nate there too. Be easier if I want.
Okay, so you will put together some type of the cricket announcing that we're putting together a task force to. You'd be able to evaluate, um, plans for.
You guys envision the commitment being through final design or just to get to design?
That's a good question. I mean, a lot of, most towns I know, they, they have these facilities task force whenever there's a big building. I, I haven't done it in the public sector, only the private sector, so I don't know.
I would guess that we would look for a different set of people for this initial evaluation.
Yeah.
As long as they know when we get to the second task force, first that source decision stand, but yeah.
So that's why I asked what the deliverable is expected to be of this particular task force. Is it, is it, um, scope? Is it requirements? Is it budget? What do we, what do we want in the deliverable of these tasks? Scope seems, options, what, I mean.
Let me say scope. Look, see if it's worth it to have. Police and Fire up there as part of the whole thing.
I think we're at a point where we should look for recommendation of this task force on outcomes for this site. Not necessarily.
Not just DPW.
Right. And then based on that. You know, that will include taking looks at and a deeper dive than we're prepared to tonight on. School Street and Pleasant Street, School Street and Fire Station. But. So, so I think we should, we should take a look at the whole picture, but I'm not going to be able to push us.
So was it really three from a scope standpoint? Is it really three? It's DPW by itself, DPW plus police, DPW plus full public safety.
True.
And, and where?
This, meaning.
I think.
Meaning one of those three.
Focus this task force on this site.
Yeah.
That's what he's suggesting.
Beginning to think that maybe. We should ask the DPW to come up with a list of what they want from the task force. So take it up, get it started at our next meeting rather than trying to sort.
That's a good idea.
All of the options right now. So if we can come back. Yes, exactly, today. With. Maybe the list of, of groups is different, but come back with a concrete recommendation for what you would like to have done.
For the deliverables for the task force.
So the, the result of tonight is that lots of things are doable in School Street.
Right.
That's really the bottom line.
There's no showstopper.
This was just a, a kind of a.
Thermally wise, programming wise, like we can, we can make it all.
We're, we're not looking for a footprint out of this group per se. You've got a footprint up here, but that's really just to demonstrate that this can work.
Yeah, proof of concept is what.
Right, that's all it is.
We actually had other proof of concepts, but I didn't want to try and go through a five.
No, that's where you're getting way out over the skis on it. Okay.
We, um, just totally messing everything up here. Cause that's what they do. First Baptist Church site up.
We didn't look at it for everything. Uh, we could, I mean, we can apply those same principles that we have some master plans to that site.
Okay, with the church. That gets fire pot on this side of one twenty-eight. We're making a phone call.
No, we can look at the acreage and, but again, the kind of.
Topo is an issue there.
Pardon?
Topo is a little, I mean.
Topo will be an issue for them too.
Is it, is it, let me ask you this, is it worth, I can make a phone calls, would make a phone call?
Yes, of course.
Yes, it is worth making a phone call, absolutely.
Well, I'd like to hear, I don't want to, I don't want to spend any time on if, if after a cursory look at this thing, you say, yeah, the topo is bad. And if you get back to me, then we can certainly make a phone call and see if that's something that they would, because they're just doing nothing over there at this point.
Yeah, but they're not going to like being up on the, I mean, ditching everything that they've already done. But.
It's worth the ask. The ask doesn't cost any money at all.
I think we've done what we can tonight.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, let's do this again sometime.
I'm going to ask that we let the people for the sculpture go ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We only saw five members on the other website, so we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could find it up. Okay, thank you.
Hope that this is going to be your fun property property. Cause art is always beautiful. My name is Amisa Van Ali. I am a sculptor. I was chosen by, uh, the New England Art Magazine as emerging artist for two thousand and twenty-four. I'm also the exhibition chair of the New England Sculptor Association. I'm a resident over at Harvard Sculptors of Cleveland. I had a dream about a mermaid here and, uh. My art goal is to awaken the connection with number and nature. And this mermaid would do this perfectly because Atlantis, the tide keeper, that's the name of the mermaid. She would be placed in Moscow. There is a perfect spot for her, actually two, and then we will have to see. What's the best and she would interact with the tide. The tide would submerge her up to her shoulder when it's tide and would unveil her body when it's low tide. It's something that does not exist in the United States or America or in the whole world. There are two sculptures that have, that interact with the tides and they are in England. One is a sculpture of a bunch of horses and another one is a sculpture of military guys. But a mermaid doesn't exist and there's something magical and beautiful about having a mermaid that gets submerged by the tide. Because it reminds us of our connection with nature and it's something magical that would add a lot of character to the town. Um, it could become a permanent landmark that reflects, reflects Manchester identity because it's Manchester by the sea. There is definitely a connection in the sea and the ocean, Atlantis, because it's on the Atlantic Ocean. But also because it's a reminder of the lost city of Atlantis in the mid. So there's a lot of potential, of touristy potential because the slow mermaid. Uh, this mermaid, because she would be life-size, um, for example, could become even more, um. Known than the Little Mermaid of Copenhagen, which is a touristic attraction where, uh. Everyone from the whole world that goes and, uh, is in awe. And so then, um, to help me achieve this role. I have, um, as I've been chosen by the New England Art Magazine as an emerging artist. They've already shown some interest in featuring my next public project. So there would be articles. I would use the New England Sculptor Association as a help to publicize this project. Which I think that is so unique that will speak, uh, on its own, but I have, um, ways of, uh. Promoting it. I would donate my time and skills to do it. So to end up with my time, beautiful, sculpt a beautiful mermaid. And, uh, and I would cast it in bronze. So everyone I spoke to about this project was in love with it. And I already found some private and also like a corporate that is willing to, um. Give me money to fund the project, uh, so I'm confident that I will find the money to do this. So I'm not asking for money or anything, but I will, I will also explore like public grants. We have like, uh, a grant writer for the New England Sculptor Association that is very good at this and can definitely help me. Uh, go forward with this project. Um, I was thinking that it would be nice to include maybe a plaque on site with the donor names. Because this is a dream and also, uh, this makes me think of the United States as a place where you. You can still like make a dream come true. And from a dream that I had, because I, I really had this vision and a dream, I'm here now speaking to you guys. And maybe with the effort of the whole community and beyond, we would be able to make it happen. And make this like a unique feature for a beautiful fountain in Manchester. So it's a very inspirational piece because it makes you realize that a dream can come true. So, um, I just, I'm before exploring everything else. So the installation that I will definitely have to, uh, consult with the marine structural engineer. And I also have, uh, our president of the New England Sculptor Association that has done many projects like this. Um, so I have ways of getting informations and making this installation safe. And secure and suitable for an environment. It would be a bronze, so bronze is very safe and actually it ages really beautifully. So we will not even maybe have to do a patina because the ocean gives the bit, the piece a beautiful, very green patina over time. So it just like will change and beautify itself with time. So basically what happens is I sculpt the original model in clay and then, uh. Uh, bring it to the foundry, they make a lost wax model and then they cast in bronze. And, um. So what I really would like to understand is I have supported by the town to pursue the stream. Because I am, the only thing I really would need help with is being guided towards like, uh, what's my next step? Because I believe that I will need to maybe, uh, speak to, uh, the conservation land or the harbor master. And, uh, and so I would like to be, to understand if it's something that you guys feel like supporting me. And then I will do the work, the job on my own, uh, with friends and helpers and the New England Sculptor Association. With friends and helpers and the New England Sculptor Association. But before like putting time and my heart into this, I need to understand if on your side there is the willing to. You have this vision like me and you can see this mermaid when you are. Where at Moscow, if you can picture something like this. That gets, it would be different. This is a mermaid that I already did for the new, for the Heritage Garden Museum and I changed the tail, so it would be.
Depending which part of the harp, so exactly where in the harbor.
Basically, when we are, when we are sitting at the benches, we look in front of us and we see there is like two places that are perfect.
And 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 there's all, there's, there's one that's connected to Moscow and then there's another piece. That's that comes down, was the other side of Title Gate.
Okay, yes.
And this would be ideal because it's very central and. And it would bring so Gloucester as the fisherman and Gloucester is a bigger town, every town has something, but this is so unique and so magical. I'm also thinking the families, the kids, the people not from here wondering, you know, if they they would have to check the tide to know. If they're gonna be able to see the old mermaid. There's the sense of awe and magic that goes very well with this town because it's so beautiful. You know, the church bells that plays wonderful music. We have the best sunsets and. I think that this would be something that can add, can beautify the place and make make it even more an artistic town and a destination for tourism. So, yeah.
A say in this.
And 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 buy on and.
Those are the three that come.
Cultural council.
Those, those are the three, yeah.
Get a vote in there. Have more problem than that.
I just think it almost.
Not their location. Have you worked with bronze in salt water before? I'm just wondering tide going up and down. I I got no problem with salt water necessarily interacting with it. Do you wind up with seaweed seaweed and a slime that you have to get rid of every month or something or?
No, it's very safe and as I said, there are multiple sc- now there has been, there's been even like underwater cultural garden that have been made with this material. And they just, they it's beautiful because she's a, she's a being that belongs to the the ocean. So even if we have analogy on the hill, it's just gonna beautify that.
The stuff gonna grow.
But I don't, but yeah, I think that that's the least of our concerns and maintenance, I'm here, so. I would be willing to do it if there is any maintenance, but there is no maintenance to be done most likely with the bronze because it's a material that. Isn't very mentally safe, but also like age and I unsolved, so.
An intriguing offer. I put, I might put DPW on the list. I don't know how something like this gets installed, but maybe. DPW wouldn't have to be involved in that in some way. I don't know.
I can start with my on, I mean, everything.
Oh, no, you need to start with him.
Got it now.
Yeah, he's got probably marine, you know.
And I didn't meet Tom Baker.
Tommy Baker and. It's basically one big morning, big.
Yeah, it's really morning.
I'm sorry, wrong word.
I think what we're prepared to say is that we're intrigued.
Very.
Yeah.
I'd like to take it to the next level of it.
And and and, but we would like you get in touch with the organizations that that greatness has listed. And get there for Wolf and. Come back and we will say, assuming that everybody else is intrigued that we are.
So could I, when I contact them, could I say that I have your support in this or not?
Yeah.
That'll be a lot, thank you for considering it and it would be a lovely gift.
Thank you so much.
These other, these other councils they.
Yeah, and you know, landscape, you know, that completed with Gloucester, it's like adding more to it.
I I don't predict that it's gonna supplant the rotunda.
That's what I was asking about.
Yeah.
And I think that it's, it's, it's a unique piece in the whole world. So if we do market this correctly. And I will do my part for it, I think that this can become huge because it's a, it's a unique piece. I I can see people traveling, you see this from all over the world.
Right off of Mascon, Masconomo is perfect spot. It really is.
She belongs there.
So now.
I wouldn't go with them right away. That's really purely installation. I I'd really, I'd go after buy on right away.
That's the harbor master.
The harbor master.
Is talk to con, count with the health, the conservation agents.
Yeah.
Back to me, we can, we can give you some contacts.
Okay, so how am I getting?
We can email you some.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So happy and so excited to bring this vision live because I think it's going to, it's going to be beautiful and it's also going to be so inspiring for everyone because. Seeing that us as a community can bring this live, me with my kit, some other people making donations, some others with their time, you know. It's just like a a community effort to birth together something beautiful, so thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Good break for the meantime.
Yes, thank you.
Hopefully these days. Well, I guess you guys have my memo.
Summary.
I'm very quick, I'll make. The other, I quit the kind of, the time restricted last few weeks, but any questions without going through it. Further updates. On what's in there.
I got a question. The town meeting going on in Essex right now, about the school budget, directly affects twenty year employees.
So depending on which budget goes through, we were notified by the school that. Her position potentially could be cut to fifty percent, so the reimbursement could be fifty percent, which can figure it out in two point five days. She would be attached to the school. Goes fully funded, we're going back to where we. And which is five days. So would you have? Worked for her the other two and a half years.
I'm sure you have work, the question might be, you have budgeted always covered budget wise.
I mean, she's funded a budget through us and the school reimburses us at the end of it.
But if the school didn't reimburse you as much.
Right.
Lot of revenue, would you still be able to cover it?
Okay, I understand.
So Daisy's is safe or?
Daisy's safe, but we have three, have you seen my memo? We have three corporate sponsors for the summer. I think one more coming in, I hope, Manchester Marine. Manchester Electric and. Rotary. So Tiffany's working with those three groups and she'll, Daisy will wear her there, their emblem for the month and then she's gonna spend the day actually at Manchester Marine.
Got a weekend day in the summer, that's really one.
Yeah.
She's, it seems like it's deeper as far as I can see. Sleep mask, really? Mask for so she can sleep.
The Cape Ann Emergency or Regional Planning Committee is up and running. It's, we have a lot of irons in the fire, so to speak. Finalizing the regional shelter plan, that's been kind of tough. Getting the final details with Gordon College, but I got an email today, I think that's coming to the end. We're planning on a hazmat tabletop exercise based in Cape Ann, a hazmat, a major hazmat incident and how we would respond to that. We're having a North Shore Emergency Management Sustainability Conference. And one of the things that's kind of further down the list, but a traffic plan, how we evacuate Cape Ann similar to what Cape Cod has. And then we're going to expand the R E P C to Regional Dispatch, Red Cross, gonna bring in the hospitals, Leahy. With Beverly and Alice Gilbert, some of the bigger companies in in Gloucester with the fly materials, Gorton's, obviously Cape Ann. Transportation Authority, AmeriCol, and then we're gonna incorporate all the public health entities. So that's up and running and then one of my new notes that's not in this memo is in September. Hamilton got a grant to support a active shooter drill region, so it's gonna be a rather large. Drill, we have our first meeting tomorrow and that was funded by Neurec, so looking forward to that very expansive training. Well, that was pretty much it, as you see in my personal highlights, still sit on the Mass Chief School Safety and Security Committee. The emergency preparedness of town is obviously top, top priority. Looking into a certification course at Ashley College. That trains me in how to do threat assessment for buildings, but I've been waitlisted for that unfortunately. I was really looking forward to that. And as you can see, if you notice, working on, driving on one twenty seven, Bridge Street, Summer Street, the speed limits have been finally changed.
Yeah. That's the belt of the bike.
And then that's pretty much it with the highlights.
No, I, I really appreciate all of the reporting, the detail associated with this emergency planning because that in general is invisible to the citizenry, okay? It's invisible to a lot of us. It's something you don't need until you need it and then if you haven't got it, it's it's a real problem, so it's very educational.
We've come a long way in the last five to seven years, especially since Chief nearly has been on board, it's training. And, you know, finally getting our plans updated.
Yeah, so it's, it looks like you're in the kind of the final, a lot of things are.
And the whole Cape Ann Regional Emergency Planning Committee, that was pretty much. Spearheaded from the tabletop exercise we had here, that was one of the outcomes.
Years ago, when was it? Yeah, about two years ago. Oh, that's good. I appreciated that. I I just might have one question. How how is your overtime going? Because I know that you're got more or less fully staffed now.
Yeah.
And I know you had big problems the last couple of years.
We're down, but I have an employee on maternity leave, I have an employee out long term. So overtime is is there, but it's, we're cut down to two persons on a shift, so there's no one in the office pretty much.
Yeah.
Seven days a week. We are taking a look at weather, certain nights that we will put that third person on. How, if we had to do it on, on Friday night, we had a hundred and fifty kids come from out of town from another school system that they had to deal with. So we had to upstep that way. We're actually calling people to 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 help. We had mutually request from the classics, but overtime is. Right now, it's not, it's slim.
Okay, I mean, it's it's close to budget?
Close to budget. Yeah, we're a little bit down from where we were last year just because of the two people that we.
All right. There's no, I know the last few years because of, well, various issues, it was like two X, three X or whatever, so it's, it's close. Good, well, great.
To that point, to your point, I was at Bravo Friday night when the whole hordes came off the beach. And I, you know, Sean Mullen was, he was a great, I thought the police presence was there and it was, it was impressive.
We actually got word that they were coming to town, so we met them at the train. Austin Johnson and Sergeant Gilson really laid the law down. This night went very smooth. Those are the things we have to plan, especially this time of year.
It is, it was impressive, thank you.
No, thank you for all your hard work in your department and things are good, so it's great.
Got a couple of questions I was doing. I I really like the partnerships, the regional partnerships that you've established over the past few years. I just think that's fantastic. Question on a more local issue, parking enforcement. I saw the the notifications come out that we're gonna start enforcing rest and parking and that. And everything, but the additional safety sticks that you have, you said you're still hiring two parking enforcement officers. Are you going to expand where they go or how's that gonna work?
That's the plan, so we're gonna expand the areas up School Street, up Pine Street, down Bridge Street toward Ashland. And and then we'll see where that goes and then I think Sergeant Luke has a plan developed for them. And then he will obviously put that in the place, but one of the things we, like I said, said we are doing, so expanding in those locations. The other place where is Coach Field Playground, we have the regular patrol school as well.
And going by White Beach.
White Beach, yeah, they 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 do that on a routine basis.
Right, that was, so that was one question. The other question is in in other areas of town hall, we've had a lot of discussion recently about succession planning. So how's yours?
I could walk out the door tomorrow and Mark could sit in my seat without any issues at all. We are, he is waitlisted for the National Academy and he's waitlisted for the PERF, the Police Executive Research, executive training.
So let me ask you a question, okay? Ten minutes ago, we talked about a task force and you said you'd love to be on it. Who's gonna be on it? Um, because that that's really what I I think is important is if we have an internal candidate we're trying to develop. It's, it's gotta be done out in the open.
Yeah.
Right, because you're not the decision maker on on who that is and so. We should start seeing more of any internal candidate that you think wants to compete for that position.
Yeah, absolutely, and and I think he's, he's ready to go forward and do that type. You will see him more when we get into the budget season this year. You've already.
When's your next vacation?
Could be tomorrow.
Guess what? You leave somebody in charge with.
Oh, I always do, yeah.
Without you answering your email.
I always do. If I go overseas, I have a personnel order that automatically goes out there.
Just to that point, I've seen Mark at basketball games, football games, okay, but I don't see him. Right, I think he was at the Little League Parade.
He was.
So, you know, there is, he is out visible.
Visibility in the community, but I'm, what I'm talking about is visibility in demonstrating the skills necessary to step into a higher level position. Leaving him in charge with you saying, don't call me, don't have vacation, is the absolute best thing you can do. The more frequent you do that, the better, right? They're talking about it and then it's doing it, right? But that's, that's how people get prepared. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another quarter of improvement.
And and we're on baby watch, I have my second grand.
I was gonna say. Any minute. Like a grandchildren, that's a good one.
Great, we discussed this with you. I'm supposed to be grandpa, but.
You know, you don't choose the names. Any guys choose the names.
Good luck.
Hopefully tonight.
All right, thank you guys.
Yep.
Hope, thank you for your patience.
Stand here.
No. Hope what Bucci, Manchester by the Sea, to the fourth, here with a request to raise a progress flag on the town's town poll on May thirty first. We delineate what's the town's flag pole?
The town's flag pole is the hole nearest the street.
Oh, so this is the flagpole in front of the town hall, since we're going all the way over here.
Yes.
The farthest part away that you could possibly get from the street. So will the United States flag be removed and the progress flag be put in place?
The Manchester town flag will be removed.
But that town, well, if you look at the task staff right now, there's not room for a second flag.
That's because it's at half staff.
Right, so if it should be needed to be at half staff during June, what happens to the progress? And why is it that we could not fly the progress flag, given that we already have an official town flag pole?
The official town flag pole is the one closest to the street.
So whose town flag pole is that?
That's not a town flag pole anymore. That is a white pole that is in control of.
Legion.
That was voted on? The last meeting I was at and previous years before that, our town manager identified that flag pole as a town cycle. And I believe in the last meeting I was at.
I, I'm sorry, do you want us to fly the flag flag? Or do you want to have a fight with the Legion?
Like, I, I was unaware that the Legion now own, is the owner of what was the town flag. Is that, is that what you're, I'm just trying to clarify.
So I, I agree with Hope that in previous conversations, when we have raised the progress flag, we talked about the, the only pole that we had as the town flag pole. I believe last year, the Select Board changed, made a decision to add a flag pole in a different spot. Personally, I don't remember whether or not poles were deemed town flag poles or not, but we added a new flag pole in, in the front.
And we called it.
But, but Hope is correct.
And it was for commemorative flags.
Commemorative flags. That was the word. But she is correct that in all previous years, when I've been on the board, the other flag pole was discussed at the town.
So all commemorative flags were flown from a new flag.
That's what was voted on last year.
Underneath the United States flag. So the current flag that you have underneath the United States flag is only a very small.
That's what we had, that's all we had, right?
Yeah, that's what we had.
That's what we had, we had to find.
We didn't want, I, I think we did not want the American flag to be up there by itself, is that?
We had a.
Didn't really talk about it.
Town flag, then we stuck it up.
Yeah, it was not a huge decision to put the Manchester.
You found it, right, you had it?
Yep, yep.
Pull out of the drawer.
So my question is, so the United States flag will remain? And if, when the flags are at half staff, which they are currently, there's not room other than for your very small flag that you, the flag pole that you've installed, does not permit room for a normal sized flag to be flown under the United States? So what happens?
We're talking about flag protocols at future meetings.
So is our new flag pole shorter?
No, it's the same height as the other flag pole.
It has a, a mechanism in the center of it, so it doesn't permit for another full sized flag to be flown at half staff.
So that's different than the.
Well, this one is beautiful, I take a look when you go on.
There is a, there's an uplight and the uplight interferes with.
Okay, I, I didn't understand the logistics.
The other, the other one had an uplighting and it got beat up with the alleyard and broke, rather than replace it, which costs a lot of money. They've got a couple of spotlights and a couple of other spots to.
But that's the other.
That's the other ones. But there was, there was a similar structure on that.
Yeah, it's quite taking when you go on time to.
I've been there, I just didn't understand what the conversation was.
So.
Yeah, so.
So I think the question is, if we have, how, first of all, my question is, how much longer is the flag going to be at half staff, based on?
This is, this is something that we need to discuss in the, in the flag discussion, because it's, it's half staff on the decision of a town employee to commemorate the death, the, the memory of a recently deceased, deceased town employee. Maybe it was for your dogs, I don't know, I'm really sorry about your dog.
So we don't, so we have an issue that we don't know why the flag is at half staff.
Oh, we do.
Okay.
It was somebody's decision.
Okay. Got it, so we have an operational issue here.
It's time they said they're going to fly, I, I just don't know that, I can find out.
But you don't.
Whose decision is it?
But you don't know what's going to happen in June, anything could happen in June.
So, so you either fly the commemorative flag at half and not have the American flag on it, or you remove the commemorative flag for those days that the American flag is at half, those are two choices. So you choose one and move forward.
Okay, so this is why we're having a follow up meeting on the flag logistics, because the flag is at half staff without the Select Board being part of that decision.
Yeah, typically you have. Most of the time it comes from the state director or federal director.
Right, exactly.
You know, I don't know if other flag poles that are commemorative flag pole have an American flag always on it. I don't, I don't think they do.
They typically don't.
It's just that, yeah. So we, we have to make that determination at the next meeting, but that's not a.
Okay, so how about, I moved that the Select Board proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ plus month in the town of Manchester by the Sea and sign a proclamation to be presented on June's.
May thirty first.
May thirty first, okay.
June first is a Sunday.
May thirty first.
Can I ask for an edit to that? Could it be the LGBTQ plus pride line? Yes, that's the whole reason.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
And so when will that meeting be for to determine what happens to the commemorative pride flag if there should be, if it should need to be?
For two weeks. Our president's meeting.
Two weeks from tonight.
So, motion on the table, a second?
A second.
For the discussion? Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Cathy? Yes. Answers yes, John?
Yes.
Just a clarification, so does the, the other older flag pole now belong to the American Legion?
It's part of the honor roll.
It's part of the honor roll, it is not the old flag pole, it is a totally different flag pole. Yeah, they took down and destroyed or crashed the old pole and put up their own pole.
Okay, so it's, the American Legion owns that?
No, no.
They have responsibility.
But they don't own the flag, the town owns the flag. I'm just trying to get.
I'm not sure exactly where. All of that's it, do we own?
So here's, here's my confusion, which, when we, when the Select Board voted to add the second flag pole, I don't remember. Did we disposition that other flag pole to the American Legion? Or did we retain it as a town flag pole and just said, we're adding a second flag pole for commemorative flags? I don't remember, we should go back to that meeting and understand what we voted on, which may have been something in addition to adding the second flag pole.
I think we added the flag pole, I'm pretty sure the wording was, this is the town flag pole, the new flag pole, and it was silent on the old flag.
That, that's my concern, is we, to answer Hope's question, I'm not sure we can answer Hope's question, because we may not have made a statement about the other flag pole, which in previous years, we always talked about it as the town flag pole. So.
But I think we also decided the second flag pole would be for commemorative.
No, we did, but that's.
This is the moot point at this point.
I think this is a discussion for another time.
Yep.
It is, we can go back to the recording of that discussion and.
I think we need to be just clear on what we voted on, on what we didn't vote on in that last meeting, when we have the next discussion in two weeks, that's my recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay. On the Employee and Volunteer of the Year Rewards, I move that we recognize Tiffany Marletta as.
A one.
A number one.
No, no, we're, I, we're not going to, I, we're going to vote on Tiffany Marletta. We're not going to discuss.
You could just say, you propose A, and then once you have a vote on that, then you can.
Okay.
Just let that count, I'll be back.
Fuck, we had a consensus.
Yeah, we do, we do.
So rather than try and remember who's A and who's one.
But when was the actual announcement supposed to be?
Well, we've already handled it.
I've already handled one, we still have another we haven't handled yet, so do we want to handle that one differently? That's the question.
Make a motion on the A.
I think it's done, but yeah, make a motion on A.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
And John says yes.
Okay, John? Here.
Okay, now I will make a motion that the board support number one. On the volunteer, as a, as a volunteer.
Second.
Of the year.
John?
Yes.
Not, I'm abstaining. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes. Congratulations.
It's all a mystery.
Okay, I, I.
I think we should fly information off the new flag. Kind of like watching a polls.
So what would you like to give these presentations?
At our next meeting?
You're not here.
You're not here.
Oh, but we can, we can delay it until you're back.
Following.
Didn't you?
Yeah.
God, don't say that.
But maybe the one after.
Yeah, first meeting in June.
First meeting again, okay.
I'm unrecognizable, I'm a bit of a, I'm a jerk of what's going on.
Okay.
Uh, let's say, we've heard enough that there's nothing we can do for you tonight. I will say, the Historic District Commission, this coming Thursday, a hearing on twenty-two Union. Well, frankly, it will be a public hearing, so that won't happen until the following month. So it's on the agenda, but it will just be.
To decide, it should be a formal public hearing.
Which will happen, and so there would really won't be a whole lot that will happen in this month, but there will be a lot that will happen in June, they have sent out plans and you know, I think you're probably aware, they would like to build a couple, you know, duplex there. There'll be a lot of opinions on it, so.
Just, it was a meeting last week with members of the planning board, CBA, Historic District, Downtown Improvement, Select Board, the developer, is that some of this information as they go forward? So they have reached out to try to get some community in.
I, I, I believe that, they, that period before the district commission, I'll say in December, and we gave them certain feedback, and I know that they've been digesting.
They digest, they come up too often at this point, they're still.
So I understand, so I understand that. One, one they, when they've submitted along with their, their application, but I know they have a Plan B. So we'll see. So that's, that's what's happening and so far as the seniors are concerned, they're happy about what happened last Monday and looking for the next steps.
Excuse me, regarding the Downtown Improvement Committee, they have been partnering really closely with the Chamber of Commerce on a presentation to help foster, to entice businesses to come to Manchester. So Steve Carhart worked real closely with Jim Brown, and they, they presented a presentation that they can, they're working on collateral, they can actually go to a business and say, here's why you want to come to Manchester. They did a really nice job and they were finding that. And they're trying to get some current business owners to be ambassadors to, to try and, you know, bring some other businesses in. They've also been trying to reach out to some grassroots members of the communities who shared some ideas on Facebook, so they, the downtown, they is trying to reach out to them to make sure that, you know, we're all kind of working together on this. And I, I guess Greg, is Mark working on a, a plan, you know, down to, he had talked about some zoning stuff and.
Let's start with trying to get consensus on what the vision is for the downtown area. So apply to what approved moving forward with the consultant to help.
Okay.
Frame that up and to develop a plan for moving.
Okay, good, because Mark has been a good regular attendee at the Downtown Improvement Committee meetings, and I look to him to make sure people aren't duplicating effort and he's connecting the dots. So just want to put that out there. Then from a bike and pet standpoint, the Bike to Work Week is May twelfth through eighteenth, and Bike to Work Day is May sixteenth. So I think they're working with Tiffany on promoting that through our various communications channels. Sorry, I have to ask again, on the wayfinding signs in the public bathrooms, how we doing? Forgot to ask about that when we talked about Downtown Improvement.
Yeah, I know the signs have been ordered.
They've been ordered, I didn't ask.
In the public bathrooms, you said they were going to start being available memorial day weekend?
Yes.
So we should see signs in town hall and, and I guess the question is, that just for, is it just seasonal? Like what was the arrangement you made with the?
The one, one business owner was willing to do it year round and the other was seasonal.
Okay. And then the town hall signage is year round? Okay, great, looking forward to it. That was it.
We saw the planning board at town meeting, so there's nothing there, and our advisory should meet next week, so.
Ox and Rec, everything was gearing up for a busy season. Money's flowing, as far as the beach tags for the month of April. I think they had been very successful in that regard. It's tough, it's a six month, see how long.
I drove by yesterday, take a bow, of course, yesterday in the pouring rain and there were six people out there. It was pouring cats and ducks, boring, they were enjoying themselves.
I drove by around forty-five, six.
It seems quiet.
You know, but when I, when I've driven by and rolled down my window.
Yeah, no, I think the team did a very nice job, right?
It's very dull, so.
I have no idea what they're reporting on the socials, because I don't have any information from Essex.
It's on the Facebook.
Oh, as we speak, live.
It's happening right now.
Consent agenda? In three minutes, we will start. Would anybody who would like to represent the Select Board, if you could scout?
I will.
Thank you.
It's on my calendar.
It's more than Mary, Mary here.
What is it? What time is it?
It's a Sunday, June one second.
Well, we have another week to do this.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's in June.
I can make that one go. It was Sunday, June 11th.
It's on Sunday, right?
That's your day of rest, isn't it?
Excuse me, the 18th. This is my, the 18th.
The same day as the week.
So it's beginning after Mother's Day.
So is that Mother's Day?
Make mothers, love to make one up on your calendar.
Yeah, I skipped over that entirely.
You can thank me later.
Do we need to get a proclamation signed?
Yeah, I have it.
That is, okay.
Will the Select Board approve the consent agenda items?
Second.
Question, John?
Yes.
Answers yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Well, we just talked about the restaurants, so moving forward. We have the TSA, the the purchase and sale agreement signed by all parties, with the decent buildings, so that's important, we're working on the calendar docs, we have a good draft of that. We'll be working on finalizing that document, which shouldn't take too long. So that's moving forward, and yet we hope to close before the closing of fiscal year. As moving forward. The Planning Board's decision to not endorse the NR on property on Spire Rock Hill that is under appeal. And so we're looking at council to review the defense of that. That will be moving forward before judge at some point. To be, to be updated as it moves along. You know, town meeting, statistically, it went very smoothly, I think. Good turnout, we're having more than some of people at the highest number. You know, the preparation, I think, paid off, the county voting system worked well, nothing comes from that. So all in all, I thought a smooth operation, and I thank all of you for decisions you made and presentations to the public, so I think that was all for the good. And then lastly, I noted that I will be away that week of, week of the night, too.
Pass up a trip to France.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, free housing in Provence is a pretty good deal. So, yeah, we'll take advantage of that.
Great.
So, that's.
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Popular acclaim.
Yes. I'll pick your proclamation for.